Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I would ask that our superintendent confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Why don't you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, everyone. First item then on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. A motion in second made to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. So next on our agenda is public participation, and I have two public participation cards, so I will read the introduction to the public participation portion. We have come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So, as I mentioned before, I have two participant comment cards, so I'll read them in the order that I had received them, and the first is Mr. Andrew Dickman. If you could please come forward. I think we have a microphone there for you, or at the podium, I think either will work. Just want to be sure we get your comments there on the record.
Just want to make sure everything's on. Can everybody hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
Certainly. Hello, my name is Andrew Dickman, and I live at 979 Decorah Road, West Bend, and I am the father of a Soon to Be Kindergartner at Decorah. I'm here today because I strongly believe it is absolutely essential to get our children back into the classroom, and also because I have some major concerns with the extreme measures as laid out in the school's reopening plan. As a parent, it's my duty to do everything in my power to keep my children safe, happy, and healthy, and so there are a few things I'd like to address from the plan that are in direct confliction with those factors. First and foremost, I believe we need to look at the data that tells us that children are not driving this pandemic. In the Journal of Pediatrics, July of 2020, researchers concluded that, based on the data collected in different settings across the globe, that children infrequently transmit COVID-19 to each other or adults, according to the CDC. 7.3% of all cases of COVID in the U.S. were among children. Of those, the Journal of Pediatrics estimates that anywhere between 90% to 100% of those were adult-to-child transmission and not child-to-child transmission. Of course, that also means that children are not the index cases when looking at the infected households. Moving on to masks, according to the guidance on the use of masks for the general public by the World Health Organization, there's no direct evidence on the effectiveness of universal masking of healthy people in a community to prevent infection with respiratory viruses, including COVID-19. That's a direct quote out of their October, their early release from October 2020. I'm sorry, that's CDC's October 2020, but that's from their June release. Furthermore, the CDC, in effectiveness of cloth masks for production against SARS coronavirus II, in their October 2020, says, "To our knowledge, only one randomized controlled trial has been conducted to determine the effectiveness of cloth masks. The study showed poor results where they were not washed frequently enough or because they became moist or contaminated." I'd like to point out that this was in a healthcare setting, and if we can't, if the healthcare workers can't produce good results, how are children supposed to do that? And that's kindergarten all the way through seniors. Now, on a side note, have you seen the recommendations for the steps needed for masks to have any sort of effectiveness that WHO put out? Basically, it's, "Don't touch them, remove them from the ear straps, if they're wet, soiled, they have to be replaced." I mean, there's no way any of this is going to be happening with children or the teachers for that matter, is my guess. Has anyone considered anything with the emotional health? Has anybody looked into anything with emotional health? There's been so much focus on physical health of everything nowadays. We need to look at the emotional health and what the long-term effects of doing masks and the social distancing and the abnormality of the school's plan for getting back into the classrooms. You know, I wonder if we're replacing one risk factor with another, instilling fear on these children, teaching kids to obsess over hygiene, the exposure to chemicals. They're going to be using twice as many, if not more, chemicals to do all the sanitation. Has anybody looked into, you know, an alternative such as the hypochlorous acid, which is a product that your body produces that has been proven to kill COVID and is being widely used throughout the world? All these things listed in the plan are relative to mitigate the risk. What about proactive and encouraging these things that lower stress and boost the immune systems? What about sunshine and play and joy and social interaction? Seems to be that all of that was missed in this reopening plan. I understand you're trying to follow the health advice from the experts, but the bottom line is they can't even agree what's going on. I also know that the plan specifically states that as of August 12th, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services has not made a final recommendation regarding closures or instructional environments. We've been dealing with this virus since March and before, and they have no recommendations. They've offered no type of help for anything. It's unacceptable and eroded all the trust of anything they have to say as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Dickman, I appreciate the comments. You've exceeded the three minutes, which is fine. Maybe you could wrap up your comments?
I appreciate it, certainly.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Operating with our children's best interests in mind, it comes down to what's going to cause the shutdowns. At what point can we move on from these mandates and these social distancing and all that? And what about the fact that Washington County is a sanctuary county where they're not implementing the mask, they're not enforcing it?
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and the extra time, thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thanks for sharing your comments. All right, our second public participant is Frank Emanuel. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly. Close?
Emmanuel Lee.
Emanuel Lee, sorry. Thank you. All right.
First, thank you, appreciate you having me here. Second, I appreciate you guys doing the Pledge of Allegiance, coming from 10 years military. That's a big thing for us. So, as far as COVID, it's a crazy thing, we're living in a crazy time right now. The problem that I'm having right now is our kids are getting a wrath of it, and it seems like the school system is trying to do the best that they can with the kids, but unfortunately, I think we're taking the wrong approach about it. 17 years in public safety, public health, as well as three years current law enforcement. I've been around the most sickest people, exposed the most craziest things you can imagine. Last year, if your school, family, child, parent wasn't affected by influenza B, correct me if I'm wrong, but almost half of, the numbers are at home, but I know half the schools in Wisconsin, most of them were either forced to shut down, their attendance was low, their teachers weren't there. I mean, that's a true statement from across the board. Where I'm at, we had, was it 60% of the school was out with COVID? Jefferson County as well, they had to shut down because, or I'm sorry, not COVID, but influenza B, and so on. When it comes to the masks with these kids, we got to start using some common sense with this type of stuff. These kids are not going to do it. And then to be held on a punishment on the backend by a psychiatrist, school principal, whoever it's going to come down to, we can't do that to these kids. We just got done with our baseball season here in West Bend. We've had roughly three to five, 300 to 400 kids through our program, not one kid, not one, tested positive for COVID. Not one kid became sick because of COVID. Nobody. We tried social distancing, it lasted five minutes. You guys know as well as I know, these kids' attention spans are going to last two minutes. There's always so much that we can do. Us as coaches, we did it, but you know what? We went about our baseball season, we kept our kids safe, and we had a very successful season this year. No kids, no kids were sick at all. These kids, three-quarters of them are in your school system. It's coming down to the same thing. So now you're going to get the kids that we just had, high-fiving, celebrating. Have you ever seen a group of kids hit a walk-off homerun this year? We had quite a few. Guarantee you those kids didn't sit in a dugout. Nothing we can do. They mobbed the kid, jumped on him, high-five, hugging, celebrated as you're supposed to. Nothing we can do about it, there's only so much we can do about it. And that same thing with the parents. Try to social distance, parents are parents. Everybody got together because that's the American way, that's how things work. But in the end of this, nobody got sick. So when it comes to the school system, now we want to take the kids who we just got done celebrating, having a great time, a great baseball season with, now we're going to separate them from their friends they just got done playing with. We're going to force them to wear face masks where they haven't worn them at all unless they went into Walmart or wherever, or Target where my wife drags me to, you know. But, the reality is, now we're going to change the perspective of everything they just did. Ladies and gentlemen, this is where the common sense comes in. I understand there's a public health committee out there, I understand there's school nurses out there, but when you look back at the common sense of it and the numbers of it, it doesn't jive, it doesn't make sense. As of today's date, 0 through 9 years of age, 0% COVID deaths in the state of Wisconsin. As of today's date, 10 years old through 19 years old, 0% deaths COVID. None at all. You want to go to sicknesses, 0 to 9, 3%. 10 to 19, 10%. Those are current numbers as of today's date, 1,900, or I'm sorry, 1,094 people passed of COVID. You'll never know how they passed, but those numbers have nothing to do with our kids because none of them are kids that are affected by COVID. Now on the other half, I understand there's teachers out there, there's teachers, we get teachers who develop cancer, teachers have underlying health conditions and so on, just like everybody else. I get that portion of it, but we cannot hold it against our kids who are not spreading this and killing people of it. We can't do that to these guys. We got to let these guys get into schools, get them out of their houses. Kids are talking through the baseball league, they are excited to go to school. That's the first time I've ever heard kids say that. Could be because they got things ended early, but that's what you want. You have the motivation, the morale's high from these kids. Let them come to school, let them be normal, and I hate to say it, guys, the health committees, they say what they say, but I look at it at a real standpoint with the 300 plus 400 kids we just had, which they have yet to do a study on or even mention it in any of their numbers. It's very successful in the end. Guys, look into it. All I can tell you is look into it, let the kids be kids, we got to get back to normal, and these kids need an education. They're not going to get it at home, especially not with this dad. They're not going to get it. I can talk to you about the Constitution, the amendments, I can tell you all kinds of things all day, but when it comes to that bridge of math or whatever it is you guys have, that's a wrap. They need to be in school, and they need to do it the right way. I appreciate your guys' time, thank you.
Thank you. And, all right. All right, the next item then on our agenda is the consent agenda, and in the consent agenda, we have minutes of the August 3, 2020 regular board meeting, ratification of contracts, the approval of driver contracts for district-provided transportation, resignations and retirements. Any questions on the consent agenda, or I would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. I should have mentioned earlier that there are six school board members here. Nancy Justman, in advance, informed me that she was not able to attend tonight's meeting because she is attending a funeral for a family member, and so our thoughts are with her. I apologize for not mentioning that sooner. All right, it's time for the superintendent's report.
So as you know, we've been planning quite a bit regarding reentry to our schools. We started with solidifying our instructional options, all those pieces, so the board's been highly engaged for several months. And our goals, as always, I think, you know, our families who are listening, our families who are here, that I think we all echo the same goals. We want our students to be able to access school. You know, we're excited about returning, welcoming them back, and we want to do that in a manner that keeps our students, our staff, and our community healthy. So again, we can continue to keep our numbers low so that we can continue to offer that full continuum of instructional options. As you know, our kind of decision-making points around instructional options are threefold, I'll go into those, but it's again, a full continuum so families can select what they need. We have different discrete needs of students, families, et cetera, and our goal has always been to offer a full range so that they have options. And also for our staff, just as our students might have health conditions, so do some of our staff members, so what options might we have for them that make returns safe as well? We heard tonight, we've heard throughout, being in attention to the social, emotional well-being of our students, that we can't just overly focus on get them back into school and hit those academics. Our students, no matter the age, are navigating change at an unprecedented level, some resilience, things being taken away and things changing on them, that's a lot to navigate, as well as coming back to school routines, redeveloping relationships after a six-month absence. So we'll be in attention to that. I'm hearing our feedback loud and clear, what does that plan exactly look like? Probably best served by grade level, what that looks like, and maybe some key pieces for our families, how to navigate those conversations at home as well. I'm sure they're facing those with kids as they think about return. And again, preserving flexibility in our planning. We know that things are going to change as information becomes more clear, that we're going to have to be flexible in our approach and make sure we're responsive to those needs, and in that, we need to be in attention to our capacity, our financial resources, and what our physical space limitations might be. Again, just a reminder for all around our instructional options, we have in-person following our school calendar five days a week in our schools. We have a virtual academy, and then a hybrid option, meaning you can take some of your classes in the virtual academy or some in-person. Some of our families are choosing to do that, some are really excited about the course catalogs they saw online as far as secondary, and we're excited to kind of mix and match and blend those environments. And then our early learners will be going back to, whether it's ROLF or one of our community site partners, they'll be going back in-person as well. So again, sometimes we focus on just that K-12 options around those three, but know that our 4K is headed back to school as well. When we talk about that return operations plan, this is, these are actually pictures of our classrooms, and you can see, you know, same colorful bulletin boards, a little more space in there. And what we've been missing is, as we said, some of those pieces from Department of Health Services, I kind of call that out in our document. Last week on our state call with superintendents, 400 of us strong saying, you know, we needed information weeks ago, we're sharing that same level of frustration. We anticipate some more information this week, but nothing that would be disruptive to our plans to return in-person for schools. What's coming soon are some of those school specifics, schedules, plans, as people are finalizing their decision around their instructional option, or being responsive to the enrollment number, determining what the classroom size, running master schedules, et cetera. So that's coming soon, and I think some of those pieces where you fear what that school learning environment's going to look like, and what am I sending my kid off to, and is it going to be so drastically different that I'm, you know, sending him off to be on lockdown in a room? And that's not the case. I know our teachers are in kind of constructing classrooms, our principals are thinking about doing videos. I think that seeing it will be helpful for our families, so principals are reaching out and creating those pieces too. I had a great meeting with public health staff just late last week, and we'll be adding some guidance specifically around masks. We've been pushing on many of the same things that we're hearing from our families tonight. How on earth is my five-year-old going to wear a mask? How on earth is this going to happen? What about developmental ages? What's the trade-off on those things? So we had a really good conversation with public health last week, and we'll write up those, but some of those things is, public health does understand the nuance of developmental ages. We immediately knew that we could come back to 4K without masks, and then we were looking at, what's that next level of age range? You know, let's say they have to wear a mask on the bus, if I get them into their class, they're with their cohort of kids, they're younger kids, and they aren't giving us that wiggle room that we've been asking for in some of those pieces. So that's forthcoming. And then we also talked about unmasking. The reality is, for all of us, we take breaks from, they hate when I say breaks, I'm sorry, I'll have to work on a new word. When I can unmask safely, where is that? What situation is that? In a classroom, outside? Because, again, our reality of our back-to-school plan is not that we want kids coming in and reporting to one room on lockdown, we want them to have access to, you know, library, recess, all of those things, we just want to do it in a responsible manner. So I was pleased about that conversation, and we'll making, we'll be making some updates given that direction. We just kind of have to write that up and have our district nurse and our public health official take another look, but we were very excited about that. They also gave us a little more guidance around when and if you need to step out if there's a positive case. So kind of before, like you said, and we heard it here tonight, you know, we're kind of going from intense, and then now as they learn more, they're helping us figure out where is that adjustment we can make. So, in the past, we were told, you know, let's say siblings were exposed, you know, one in a classroom, and they would have to step out. That's no longer going to be the case. We can actually minimize to a classroom and some direct exposures so that, again, we can create the conditions and we can create that kind of contact tracing so that we're not saying, "I have to shut down a whole class, I have to shut down this." So that was really, a really great conversation that came at the end of last week. So I look forward to kind of updating that and getting those pieces in there. So that's forthcoming. And we know, like I said, as they're getting in information, we really lean on the local information. Our public health has created, if you haven't seen it, I know we had access to it early, but there's a dashboard that talks about specifics of school-age kids. I can drill down by zip code and tell you where my kids are, what's going on, and look at those metrics instead of those larger, maybe amplified metrics for some other areas. In that, we're certainly thinking about contingencies around what is that decision-making and foreclosure, what are those external and internal? As I said, public health is really working with us to give us the data that we need so I don't have to rely on a wider net of data. I can look very locally at my own schools, my own classrooms, and be responsive to what I see on my doorstep versus having to go and be affiliated with maybe another system that has perhaps, you know, kind of some cases burgeoning in their area. We will continue to develop alternate schedules, that's nothing that we are putting in play right now, and by that I mean, there were lots of rumors around, are we going to an A/B schedule? And you see some districts doing that, where it's like your kids are going to come to school every other day, or they're going to come in the AM and PM, and we just don't have that need, we don't have those numbers, we don't have that piece. But will we continue to work on that? Should we need it? Sure, but it's nothing we have to put in place. So I just want to give the board that assurance that we'll still work on that wide range of contingency plans, as well as making sure that we have substitutes and we can shift that staff. You saw that in that plan, because I don't want that fear for families and our own staff around, like, you know, are we all just waiting for that call at 6:00 AM saying, "I had to close"? No. What contingency plans around staff do we have in place? So let's say grownups do get sick, where do I realign staff? How do I continue educating kids and moving them through their days? Again, so a wide range of contingency planning and very localized in our data and decision-making. Again, we look at, to a wide range of resources, and again, most locally is our Director of Public Health, you know, really assessing our own numbers, our own pieces. I think it'll be very informative, as we noted, you know, some data was shared right now, I think in, as of last week's numbers, I think there's 12 cases of school-aged children in our zip codes that we serve, and I'm not even sure that they all come to school. Our largest rise right now in testing and in positive cases is in 18-year-olds. I mean, that could be, that could be kids who are no longer coming to school in fall. So we really are able to monitor, like we said, by age, by area, and what we're really navigating. This is again, one of our classrooms, you can see it's, you know, still colorful, still fun, it's just a little bit more spaced, and they still have lots of materials to get out and do. There's some things that are in progress. So right now, our families are finalizing their instructional option selection. I know the largest set of questions is around hybrid, so I think the advice that I would give to our families and communities who are watching tonight is to like, take a look online at the virtual catalog and make some preliminary selections, and when you do that and you register, someone will actually schedule a individual call with you, help you navigate that, and then help you align it with your own in-person schedules. So they'll do that work. So just let us know, continue to reach out so that we can help you. We know those are very individual cases. Again, enrollment and scheduling is happening by school, those instructional options, we would encourage families to complete those by tomorrow at midnight. If you're struggling with that decision, give us a call, we'll help you navigate that so that we can move through, get those schedules up to families, and our site-level communications can come out sooner rather than later. We've already begun a transfer of our own staff to the virtual academy. As you saw, we had a lot of people express interest in either a full virtual or many more in the hybrid, so we've already begun that migration of staff, and that was exactly what we'd hoped would happen. We partnered with Edmentum to help give us the platform, but we want our teachers in front of our kids, and that's certainly happening. We're also working with our community options for childcare. We know our families are seeking either before and after-school care, or kind of that what-of care, or maybe they want a virtual environment, but they want to do it within a childcare option setting. So we continue to reach out so that we can help communicate that information to our families and get them connected. Our big idea was how to support our families in connecting with each other, so whether it's, "Hey, we don't want to do the buses, is there anyone else in, you know, the Decorah area who wants to carpool just a small group of us? I'm doing this, is there anyone who could be backup care?" They asked for us to help them get connected with each other, and we will certainly support that as well. So again, our recommendation includes that full continuum of instructional options. Right now, that face covering for students and staff for in-person or while at district and building grounds, again, we'll be able to tighten up that communication based on my conversation with public health, where really is that occurring, what does unmasking look like, which age ranges would be, you know, masks off in the classroom or their small groups, and what do those environments look like? And we'll continue to reassess that based on our numbers and our local data. And then making sure we're respecting physical distance, no, I just want to be transparent in some of our spaces, that full six feet isn't an option, but they're a little bit tighter. So we just want to be really clear with our families around where that is, what space looks like, and continuing to provide physical distancing where we can. We'll have visual cues around traffic patterns, I think we've all seen some of those photos online of, you know, kind of those crowded hallways. They're extending some passing time, and just, you know, kids will pass in the hallway, but maybe they're full of traffic, there's some staggered times. And certainly limiting our visitors, volunteers, and non-staff for right now. So those are all pieces. I know we talk about different communications and all those, it's interesting, and I should bring to light while I have the audience for it, we've been hit by a fake Facebook account that continues to post and news outlets claiming they're an employee of West Bend, and they are not. If you watch that account, we reported it several times, at first it said it was a gym teacher. Well, a physical education teacher wouldn't refer to themselves as a gym teacher, so that, you know, they were saying hurtful, hateful things, so we looked into it. There is no employee by that name. That account continues to change what their role is and where they've worked, and it continues to hit media outlets. So I guess when we're thinking about communications and all of that, we just encourage our families to reach out to us directly, that we're here, we're here to listen to feedback, whether it's phone, your principals, ourselves at district office, just connect with us, we'll help you navigate these recommendations, what makes sense for your child, for your family, and as we move forward, we'll continue to solicit feedback as well. Are there any questions from the board regarding those key components?
Questions for our superintendent.
Not a question as much as just comments. Thank you. I can't imagine the amount of hours that this body of work represents. Thank you to all of our teachers and administrators that have been a part of the planning processes, the neighboring districts, the global districts that have helped play into this. I respect the comments from Mr. Dickman and Mr. Manuelli, that I'm not sure where I fall on this thing. Is this overkill? I had a friend reach out to me last week when the plan was published, and that was his general take. And I said, understand that this is a no-win situation. For every one of you who feels that this is overreach and unnecessary, there's another one who feels that this is reckless and not enough. And at the end of the day, we've got over 7,000 students and teachers and staff that we are responsible for, and as much as I hate wearing this thing, if it helps in some small way, I'll do my part. And I've got friends in the medical world, two of them who are not associated with each other, and they're on opposite ends of the spectrum. They both understand the need for them to mask in their professional day, but in terms of kids getting back in school, one of them's on the fence, and the other one is, heck yeah, they need to get back in school, and they don't transmit this. So the science side of this is still all over the map. At the end of the day, I want to get our kids back in school, so that they can be with their friends. Maybe it looks a little different, but they can be with their friends, they can be with their teachers, and we're getting education in front of them, as opposed to what we had for fourth quarter. Thank you.
I think that's one of the easiest ways that we continue to frame it with ourselves, our families. You know, we want our instruction to happen in the classroom and not in your living room, unless that's a choice you want to make. So we're going to do, you know, what we need to do, and does it look like this forever? No. Maybe this is our, you know, opening, just, and then we can continue to loosen up as we are responsive to our own numbers. But I, like you, you know, it's hard being told what to do, and I don't want to position us where they are taking away my choices because I've got positive cases and I need to shut down these avenues. I want to do what I can do to keep that full continuum of opportunities open for our students and families. So we'll continue to evolve as, you know, information evolves, you know, how our community's impacted, and we'll be responsive right along with it.
Question for you in the community conversations, and Mr. Manuelli cited the West Bend Little League and the success you had this season. You know, one of the things that's been rolling through my head is, kids have been going back to daycare in West Bend for a number of months now. Do you have any data on how that's going and what kind of positive cases may have come out of that? Probably more so with the care providers than the children themselves, but nonetheless.
So we haven't experienced, when we check in with public health, again, we kind of get some of those behind-the-scenes and where it is, so that we know, you know, is it knocking out my doorstep, is it where else? But they did not experience any large closures or anything like that in daycare facilities that I'm aware of in our communities. So that was great news, that, you know, people were able to start, move through, and did not experience that. So we're hopeful that we have the same.
Did I see?
I was just going to make a quick comment, echo one of our addressers of the board tonight, that kids are excited to come back to school. I've heard that all weekend about, hey, it's coming soon. So this is a chance for us, and I recommend to parents that haven't reached out to their principals, other administrators, and the superintendent to reach out if you're making the final choice. We really have, and I want to commend our staff, superintendent took out of her time to go to a 7:00 AM rotary meeting and take questions for longer than probably was scheduled, but to answer questions. So we're here to answer questions, and I really respect the plan we put together and echo Paul's comments, that as many comments as you have on masks, on, do we really need them at all? There's equal number on that side. So I appreciate hearing you speak that we're working on some accommodations by public health and what we're hearing in our community. So thank you for that.
Other comments?
I have one. First of all, thank you Superintendent Wimmer for this extensive document. I also realize how much work you've put in. And I'm just asking for one little favor. Is it possible to get an executive summary or thumbnail sketch? I know a lot of people don't want to sit down and read 40 pages, and I think sometimes there's a spread. Even though this is very easy to read, it's just intimidating that it's so long, and I fear that there's misinformation gets spread when people don't take the time to read it. So to have a quick executive summary or like one or two-page document that highlights the things that people ask the most frequently, I think would be helpful.
Sure. So prior, if we look back, it would be posted right online. Prior to that, we gave more of a skeleton. It was in eight pages, a little bit more concise. We can get it down to those bullets, and we're also working on, kind of, what are the highlights and overviews of what does this mean for my school? So let's say I just want, like, the Decorah version of this. Our communications are working on tightening it up. You know, it's always, it's there if you want it, I guess. So there's some people hungry for that much information, so we want to provide that. And again, you can search in that document, you can use that table of contents. If you want that skinnier version, kind of go to that week before, that's a little bit more of the highlights, and then we'll work to continue condensing. So we hear you loud and clear on that. But, and also too, I just need to let you know that this is the work of a large team, cross-districts, cross, you know, larger-than-administrators and our staff, you know, really a lot of input from our families and what questions they had and what they needed to know, and how we can make it clear for them. So it's really a community effort at this point.
What do you see as some of the potential threats to this plan between now and two weeks from tomorrow?
I, you know, I really don't. So you started hearing rumors of, well, the governor's going to shut down schools. So in our administrative team, we went straight after that rumor, two weeks running, and said, we're starting to hear this circulate. They're like, no, that's not coming out of the governor's office. That's, you know, here are your tools, here's what you're doing. Again, that DHS information, we were all kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop of what that was. And in our state call, every bit as frustrated as everyone else that that wasn't forthcoming. But then we were really pressing on, so is there going to be anything directive? And they said the same thing. It won't be directive, it would be more guidance and updated information. So again, still preserving our local control and plan. So I don't foresee on the horizon threats to our plan and our ability to maintain that continuum of options for students and families.
Superintendent, how strong of a hold does the county health department have in that regard? Can they come in and say, you need to go virtual?
No. She would be advising. So, and like I said, she works with us very directly, you know, outside of any other influence. It's literally superintendent's and our public health advisor and going through my real local data and walking through different situations. Like I said, we were able to have a really great conversation just at the tail end of last week, pushing on some things, and she was helping us frame that flexibility. So she wouldn't be doing none.
I know you've worked with administrators, principals, and a lot of our teaching staff, some aides and things to put this plan together. What are they saying about the plan? Are they excited about it? Excited to come back to work? Or do you think, first day of school, we might have 300 employees not show up?
So no. So our teachers didn't sign up, no staff member did, to be in a virtual world. Some were really intrigued by it and volunteered for that setting. And as we have those opportunities, like I said, we started that migration of some of our very own teachers, so that's wonderful. But our teachers want to be working with kids. They want to just make sure that we're doing what we can to make it safe for them. Because as we said, it's not necessarily the risk burden for children, but we're older, so it might be for the elders. So they just want to make sure that we're in attention as a system. So we really left it open. While there were planning teams and site planning teams, we opened it up to all staff to give feedback, either at the district level, the site level, and we continue to work through that. They are, above all else, creative and dedicated individuals. So as they look and think about, what would my classroom look like? Or can I get plexi here? And I, you know, I want kids to see my face, this is really important. How can I do this instead? And so we're really open to those ideas and helping them navigate that. So, but I would be remiss if I didn't say there's some that are absolutely concerned. You know, again, you have a lot of competing information out there and those pieces, and what is that risk that they're assuming? So we do our best with our staff to just connect them to our HR department and have those as individual conversations, just as we do with our family, to help them find where they feel good. But again, really excited about seeing kids again, and, you know, we're as bad as kids when it comes to return to school. You know, we're already out shopping for school supplies, no one can sleep those night before's. We're very excited to welcome kids back after six months.
Thank you.
I'll echo the comments of the others on the board. Thank you to the administration for putting this together. Thank you for the community, for all the input, and certainly appreciate the extraordinary efforts around the communication that went between administration and the community. In my opinion, I support this plan because I believe it's well-reasoned and balanced. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is that we are equipping our parents with choice. And I think that's very, very important, because we know there are different individuals in different circumstances. At the same time, I think, and I hope you would agree, we need to be adaptive, because this is, this plan is printed today, and I would assume this goes without saying, but I would imagine this is not a set-it-and-forget-it plan. Can you talk a little bit about what that process looks like, how that communication loop would go back to the community and to this board?
So I, again, above all else, we want to be responsive, and we're going to be not only looking at our daily dashboard of attendance, monitoring. I did, when I was with public health last week, kind of co-construct what does this look like? We want to be very transparent with our entire community. We'll do kind of a dashboard, weekly update, so people can assess, like, what's going on in schools, what does that look like? So we want that out publicly every week on that. Our board will receive weekly communications, but our team will receive daily assessment of attendance, staff, and students, so we know what to do on efforts. I was talking with public health around how to stage response, so that we're mobilizing very quickly and disrupting anything before it kind of spreads. And again, their guidance on, you know, how to just move students who might be positive or what that looks like has been helpful. But again, we'll be very transparent with our families at schools too, because we want you to know what's going on. I know from my conversations with children's health, that the fall viruses are making their way into the community just on time. They look a lot like this, so how do we untangle that? How do we be responsive and how to make sure that we're all kind of in tune to that? So I want families to know, this is what's emerging, this is what we see as some symptoms, that kind of thing. Because, again, everyone's situation is unique, and I don't know if there's intergenerational living, or if maybe mom is pregnant and, you know, at a higher risk. So we'll just be really, like I said, kind of throughout, overcommunicating and foreshadowing changes. So our tight monitoring of daily and weekly data at our school, classroom, and then local level will help us foreshadow, like, I'm seeing this climb, we need to go from a 24-hour, you know, symptom-free to a 48-hour window to disrupt, and I'm going to send in, you know, this cleaning, and we're going to, you know, this protocol, that kind of thing. So we'll be very transparent, probably weekly.
And I appreciate that, and I think, you know, for the board's consideration, when this plan came up tonight on the agenda for approval, the one hesitation I had is, I didn't want to make the implication that in order to change the plan going forward, when you need to make tweaks, it doesn't need necessarily to wait for another school board meeting. We can't wait that long. And so with the board's indulgence, I will make, I'll make a motion, but I don't want it to stop our discussion. So I would move to approve the reopening plan as presented by the administration, and further, that the administration be given the authority to amend the reopening plan in its discretion, with prompt communication to the public and to this board. So I would make that motion. Would there be a second?
Second.
Motion and second. I'll read it one more time, just for the good of the order, to approve the reopening plan as presented by administration, and further, that administration be given the authority to amend the reopening plan in its discretion, with prompt communication to the board and the public. Discussion, any final discussion?
I do have a question, not about the motion, if I may.
Of course.
So Superintendent, recognizing the need to plan for the negative side of this, an outbreak in a classroom, in a school, et cetera, is wise, obviously. Let's look to the positive side of this. With county health department's input, what are the triggers to begin relaxing and getting back to more of a case of normalcy? How many days declining to what and so forth?
So that's some of the metrics that we were talking about, coming from that Department of DHS, Department of Health Services, and our public health officials are waiting, just as I am, if there's any kind of guidance. So we've been kind of holding off, we didn't want to put out something that was overly firm. We've heard, generally, schools go by a 20%. If there was all of a sudden the 20% attendance, we know that that will be a little bit lower. Again, I'm looking at kind of making moves just very quickly, you know, so if we have a positive case, that we're able to isolate that, attend to what we need to, and not wait for some magical number. Again, that's not going to be a closure number per se, for what we're hearing. But again, we'll develop that locally. But we're looking at holding steady that we're not climbing, we're not reaching a burden in the community on our healthcare system, that kind of thing. And to make sure that I can still operate. So I can still provide instruction, cleaning and sanitizing, food service, you know, that I've got what I need to continue doing those things safely.
And so as the situation improves, it sounds like the administration will consider relaxing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's why, you know, we started setting kind of a calendar of meetings with our public health official and superintendent, so we can really go through our local data and make local decisions on what is, we're really seeing and how do we respond.
Do we have last year's sick outnumber students and subs, or teachers, so that we could take a look at this time last year? And if we get to the end of September and we see that our absence numbers are not statistically different than they were a year ago, and our positive cases are at least steady to maybe perhaps even declining, would those be ingredients that would say, we're okay to relax things a little bit more?
They absolutely would. So I think over the course of the next four weeks, really framing that, getting some of that guidance, and then localizing it, what does it mean for us? And then we could flush out, there's two sections that called external and internal decision-making factors. We put some teeth around that, so that it was clear for our families. But again, we're, you know, it's not to be restrictive, it's just to build awareness and what do we need to do to kind of stop if we see a cycle starting of something.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so I will call the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate the work.
Just while we're saying, you know, reiterating to our community members, reach out to us. There's no question, too small, I get that quite a bit. Well, I wasn't sure if I should call. Don't worry yourself, just call. We'll either answer your question, we'll get you routed to the right person, we'll help you navigate your decision. So just reach out.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have three approvals of various curriculum items. The next one is approval of annual curriculum plan, including course overview documents. And Laura Jackson is coming to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are looking at the annual curriculum plan for approval by the board. Each year at this time, the board reviews the plan for curriculum work to be done during the course of the school year and approves course overview documents. Our course overview documents are accessible on our district website to all board members and to the general public through the BYOC platform. And that information is in the executive summary. There are some changes that you're aware of that had happened over the course of the year, and such as the seventh-grade social studies, the language workshop, and the word study components. Also, in your information, again, is the work to be done. The standards that the district is using, we have previously approved the parental notice of the academic standards of the... of the academic standards that the district will be working with during the course of the school year that is included in the plan as well. Are there any questions from the board about the curriculum plan?
Any questions? Hearing that, I think administration seeking a motion to approve the plan, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion and second, to approve the annual curriculum plan, including the course overview documents. Any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. All right. And the next item is approval of primary resources for advanced placement, U.S. history and human geography.
The approval of primary resources for a course is something our board does whenever a primary resource comes forward. These are included on the course overview documents, so given approval of these two resources, the course overview documents will be updated to reflect that. The AP U.S. history, so all of our AP programs have utilized textbooks that are approved by the college board for use in the AP courseware. The AP U.S. history textbook that we had been using for a number of years is no longer considered an approved document. Our AP U.S. history teachers poured over multiple versions of textbooks and really had a strong recommendation for the AMSCO textbook as described. And our AP human geography teachers spent time during the whole course of this school year, really looking at resources. When they went to the annual review, they discussed with other AP teachers what they found to be most effective, and really came forward with a solid recommendation for the AP human geography book referenced in the documents. Does the board have any questions about this?
Just to clarify, this document reflected that the purchase of these materials has been budgeted for and is expected to come within budget, is that true?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? I move to approve the primary resources for purchase for advanced placement, U.S. history, and advanced placement, human geography.
Second.
Motion and second, to approve the resources. Any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and our third item is approval of primary resource for intermediate orchestra grades five and six.
So orchestra teachers, particularly our middle school orchestra, intermediate school orchestra teacher approached us about using a different textbook for the orchestra program. The, they had the opportunity to, as a whole department, have some, engage in some professional development last August. The professional development was provided free of charge, and they really got to explore and look at not only some different programs, but how it approaches the teaching of orchestra, the strings, the music, the annotation, and really felt strongly about this particular program. It also happens to be used in our band courses. And so the sound innovations, really, as they move forward into this school year, really felt this was really, really a strong program. Sound innovations also has an online component in which students play into the program on the device that they have, so it works with ProBooks. They play their music into that. It keeps pace and notifies them when they're off pace, off pitch, if, and gives them instant feedback. And they can also record that, and their teacher can provide additional feedback to them with, as they listen to the recordings of the student. Are there any questions about the sound innovations?
I read about this through our, the materials you provided, and it sounds really, really cool. So I will make the motion to approve the new curriculum for orchestra five, six.
Second.
Sorry about that. Motion and second, to approve primary resource for intermediate orchestra grades five and six. Any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda then is information regarding our September 28th, 2020, annual meeting agenda, budget, and resolutions. And I believe Andy Sarno is at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Wimmer. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. That's, I was trying to think of the word opposite of nostalgic, but it's almost premonising of what's to come here this next month with our annual meeting, the budget hearing, but we're going to be talking about that just a little bit this evening. I'm just going to open up a document real quick. Have a very brief presentation that I'd like to share this evening. It's going to be taking into us, just taking us into just a little bit of what's to come here soon, what's going on between lining up all of the different, some of the uncertainties, the assumptions that we're making, information. So we're going to be talking a little bit about the agenda, the resolutions, and some financial information for the 101st meeting that's coming up here this next month. Going to talk about the date and the location of the meeting, annual meeting of the electors, the resolutions. There's four resolutions that have typically been brought forward, planning on that as well. Budget and financial information I'd like to share, and I did this a year ago at this time, just a little bit of a financial 101, kind of where some of the numbers come from and whatnot. Kept it fairly simple, but I'd just like to share a little bit, just get it kind of in that frame of thinking again. And then as well, just a reminder, because the annual meeting, the budget hearing, whatnot, it's a non-binding vote of the electors, those that are in attendance that evening. You will be setting the formal levy, which is a dollar amount, the mill rate, which is the taxation rate, on October 26th per state statute. So I just want to remind folks of that evening, because the annual meeting that we have, very important for the communication, the listening and whatnot, allowing us enough time to make some adjustments prior to that statutory requirement. So I want to just talk about the 101st. The meeting will be, and that was set last year, at last year's annual meeting. It's going to be Monday, September 28th, 2020, 6:00 p.m. registration, 6:30, public hearing of the 2021 budget. That's the year that we're in right now. We will have a seven o'clock annual meeting, and that's kind of a state of the district, if you will. And it will be here in the high school's auditorium, 1305 East Decorum. I will just real quickly, because I'd like to, there we go. This will be, this is a draft of the agenda, as well as the resolutions. It was posted, I did have one typo that I did correct, and I'll make sure that an updated document does get posted. But this is just showing the 101st on September 28th, here at the high school's auditorium. We'll have a six o'clock registration. We'll begin our public hearing of the 2021 budget. Lot of rules that fall into that, against statutory requirements, where we have to post it twice prior to the meeting, at least 15 days beforehand, publication in the newspaper, again, within 10 days. There are assumptions, there's information that we use to determine all of that, often and regularly, because the third Friday count, our property values aren't even released by the Department of Revenue until October 15th. So this is preliminary information. We will be finalizing the information by the end of October, but again, very important, but I'll be giving that to update, answering questions of the community and whatnot. We would then adjourn, we would wait until, and I think last year it took just about that whole 30 minutes. If it were shorter, we'd wait until seven o'clock, the annual meeting. Board President Chris would call the board, or call the meeting to order. We'd have an update of the, update of the district, a state of the district, and then the four resolutions. I have just samples of this. There are at this point in time, and these have yet to be finalized, and we will have this again, probably right here towards the end of this month, rolling into early September, essentially finalizing what we would be levying. So all of those dollar amounts are levies, different components of the levy that make up the, well, it's about $42 million that we end up levying. The general fund, our debt, our Fund 80, which is our community service fund, any of the special projects, which are 40s funds, Fund 41 for capital improvement, Fund 46, if we have any of that money going in. So all of that would be included in the first resolution, is the actual tax levy. Number two, a fairly standard, I don't want to call it a boilerplate, because it does vary by district, but this is a Russian resolution allowing the disposal of property, you guys, rather the constituents of the district, allowing authorization to dispose of assets with value and whatnot, properly recording those. Resolution number three is your compensation. So again, non-binding resolution here that's brought forward for the constituents to vote on that night. I did, and this is information in purple that I included last year as well, but the last change that was made was back in 2014, 15, when it was $2,000 for a board member, $2,100, or excuse me, 2,000, yeah, $2,100 for an officer. But that top line, the current rate, and that's true for the last year that we just ended, as well as what we might be proposing as well for this year, I don't want to assume. That's one of the big things is the voters are, the constituents are coming forward to vote on this, so we need to leave it just a little bit. But currently at 2,500 and 2,600 for officers. Again, that could change. And then the fourth resolution is setting the date. I have put it in here right now, that fourth Monday, September 27th of 2021. It can be held between May 15th and October 31st. October 31st is fairly tight. May 15th is fairly preliminary. But for what would be the board's wishes, or for that matter, again, non-binding, I lied, this one is actually binding. We would be setting it at the meeting for the following year, but it would be my recommendation at this point in time unless we wish to change it. I've done it as early as July. August starts to get into the doldrums of summer, that people just want to kind of be away a little bit. But September seems to be a nice time to be able, school's back in session, we're kind of getting back in order. Still allows for enough time to be able to make adjustments, if there's any wishes of the community and the board to make prior to setting the final levy. So I just wanted to bring these forward for awareness and discussion tonight. Any thoughts on any of the items?
Yeah, I have a thought. I would recommend keeping the salary of board members the same with no increases, and I believe it's been now for many years. I don't know the, over the top of my head, but I do know comparing ourselves to the others in the county, the county board compensation's about three times as much, and the city council members are about two times as much. I just want to say, every tax dollar is precious here. For those wanting to know anything about school district finances, A to Z, Andy is excellent, come to the annual meeting, and he will go through all the details. So I'm glad we got that communication out, with especially everyone listening. I also want to say, for those listening, as precursor to prior years, our mill rate in West Bend, out of the 422 school districts in the state, is in the lower 50. That means we, as a percentage of your tax dollars, you spend the 42 million, our mill rate is in the bottom 10%, roughly. So we're very conscious of every tax dollar we get. You will get shared that information at the annual meeting, our mill rates, history, our recommendations, and going forward, and our mill rate compared to the others in our community and the state. So I just want to commend the finance team, and anyone that has a question from the public, please come to that meeting. But again, my recommendation is to keep our salaries the same, would be my thoughts.
Other questions, other comments?
We did bring this forward last year at the first meeting in September, prior to the annual budget meeting for board approval, and discussions prior to that meeting at that time. It's a little presumptuous to bring the resolutions forward for your approval, for the community to then vote on. I'd be more than happy to plug in those dollar amounts, but please work with Superintendent Wimmer, let me know if we should be bringing this back again. I consulted WASB, I consulted other colleagues again this year, and the thought was, that's presumptuous. I couldn't find anybody that was doing it, but I wouldn't want to not meet your wishes. So I will work with Superintendent Wimmer on what that September agenda might look like, the early meeting, not this meeting.
Andy, I appreciate that. I admit, I should have, should have asked this earlier, but is this something that requires this board's approval?
It does not.
Yeah.
I've always brought it forward at this time, almost every year at this meeting, for awareness, to get us thinking about it again, especially that Finance 101 and the resolutions, kind of what those mean for the district, but I've never had them approved prior to bringing forward at the actual meeting.
And I think it's in good form that we did bring it here. We've got another board meeting coming up on September 14th. The public will have an opportunity for comment and input, and so I think that's a good plan.
Thank you.
And the public has opportunity for comment at the annual meeting itself, obviously. That's a meeting of the electors, and that's the time, you know, for the public to have input as well for these resolutions.
It's a good point.
So Andy, in terms of the timing of this annual meeting, doing it earlier than, than end of September, we would still set the levy in October, because that's when we get the state numbers. Is there, do we have any more information in the September timeframe to substantiate this than we do, from the state specifically, than we would in July, thus making it more advantageous and informative to do this in the September window?
Yeah, so some of the driving pieces of information, the third Friday count in September, so that's literally happening right around the date, right around this date, if not the week before. It usually takes a couple or several weeks to get that information compiled, but we already know, at least by this time, the students who've shown up. We do have that. So some of the assumptions, we're able to start dialing in on them, but like I said, we get information from Baird, our finance group, they start to share some of the property value information, but we don't get that final information until October 15th from the Department of Revenue. So if we said, yeah, let's do it on that April, on that May 15th date, by that point, there are bigger assumptions, we're not able to dial in a little bit more than we should. So I'm in favor of waiting a little bit longer to be able to have that, but there is that tipping point of, I've done this meeting as late as October 26th, for an October 30th levy and mill rate set, that's too late. It doesn't allow for enough time to be able to adjust and be able to, to get everything completed, so.
And let's be honest, you're the guy in the crucible, putting all this together. So it's really to your advantage, or, you know, you're the one that has to bear the brunt, and I can certainly appreciate doing it last minute, and then you get four days without any sleep. Do you see any reason to move this to a point earlier in the calendar than when we've done it the last couple of years, or does late September seem to be about as good a shot to still give you ample time to adjust for that final levy meeting?
Late September works well. We do, if you recall, back in June, we set the preliminary budget. There are districts that capitalize on that opportunity and turn that into the annual meeting. They utilize that to make an amendment to the prior year, even have the annual meeting for that year that's coming ahead. And I'd be more than happy to work with Superintendent Wimmer, if you have any thoughts that you'd like to share at this point in time, because we all get into kind of our nuances, and I'd be happy to listen in.
I think we can, you know, just listen to the board, look at past practice, make sure we've got enough lead time and enough community response time to, I know that feedback and working with our community is important to the board, so making sure we have that, as well as viable data. Like you said, you can go early, and then you're making an amendment later, you can go later, but, you know, so it's really some nuances. We can work with the board to show you what the options are and what they would be.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts for Andy? Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Quick little Finance 101.
Sure.
And again, I'll be brief. We did this last year at this time, we've got the revenue limit, and that's really the members, the students that reside in our boundaries, that are educated across public schools. You multiply that by the district's per pupil allowance, which this year, we've just begun, is $10,000. We're a low-spending district, and we were brought up by $300. Last year it was at $9,700 as a low-spending district. So this is just a hypothetical, we've got approximately 60, and it's a three-year average, 6,300 students, FTEs, multiplied by the $10,000, you're talking about $63 million approximately. Just the same. Just a sample. We bring forward the actual numbers, that's why we have the counts and whatnot. We take that revenue limit and then really the two funding sources for that are between state aid and property taxes. So generally speaking, people say, hey, state aid plus property taxes equals your revenue limit. It's not quite right, it's not quite accurate. Really what they do, kind of the really of it, is they take that revenue limit of the $63 million, there's a three-tier formula that determines your state aid, so it's really your revenue limit minus your state aid equals your property taxes. So when we think about this, there are some things that are under our control, we can do whatever we can to maximize that state aid, your state aid for this year that we're in right now is actually based on our spending last year, we're still in the audit process. My team, and I got to tell you, this year, and we've always accounted for all of our money properly, we've always had very clean audits, this year's audit is going very well. Between my team, I'd like to thank them, I'd like to thank the department heads and budget owners, we had a very, very clean year, had nothing to do with COVID, it was just, I think things were set up properly, we streamlined some things, it was a very flawless year and the audit is going phenomenal. So we're still making some adjustments and what I'm trying to do at this point is we're making those final tweaks with what the auditors are doing, and trying to maximize our aid for this year we're in now based on some of those spending, which that audit wrap-up is a part of that. So just a little bit of important piece, because we're sensitive to the taxpayers, any dollar that we can get out of state aid is something that we don't have to levy for. Quick reminder, October 26th, that's when you'll be setting that final levy, I don't want to ignore that, that's the levy is the dollar amount, the taxation rate or the mill rate is the percentage. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain those as well tonight.
Any other questions?
So Andy, I'll call out the elephant in the room. Are you hearing any rumblings out of Madison about how they're going to close the gap on the state budgets?
I believe that, and we had discussion about this back in June, I don't think they're going to touch the year that we're in right now. What I'm mentally and literally preparing us for is the next biennial budget, which is 21, 23. And I think that is going to be maybe up to and including or beyond what an Act 10-type situation was, where the funding is just not there, and we're going to have to do something in order to meet that limitation that exists. So it is substantial, it warrants enough planning and preparatory work that we should know, and I think you remember, we started working on the budget we're in right now on November 1st. So we set the levy on October 28th and 28th last year, and that next day we had a cabinet meeting, all of our leadership got together and we already had that framework already laid out. We're going to be doing that again, but it's a part of a biennial budget and we can't really have that information because it's not finalized until June, July. So we need to talk about flexibility and whatnot, we need to plan, we need to be fairly tight. Hopefully we'll hear some rumblings and we'll understand what that means with the Department of Revenue and the monies that they have the ability to collect, but we'll just have to be ready to execute and have a balanced budget. I am hoping that we'll have a little bit of a surplus in the current year we're in right now, we will end up with a little bit of a surplus for the year that we just ended, and I'd like to say that where it would be nice to fully grow our fund balance a little bit, we may need some of that money that we've added over last year and this year to help bridge us in and buffer it just a little bit, so we'll have those discussions sooner than it'll feel like. Great questions, Eric.
Thanks. Other questions? Andy, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I apologize for accidentally cutting you off there earlier.
No, 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 sorry.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is committee reports, and we're going to hear from the Chair of our Curriculum Committee, Erin Dove.
Thank you. So the Curriculum Committee of the Board met last Tuesday, August 11th, in the boardroom, and a lot of what we talked about will sound very familiar as they were the action items on today's agenda. The committee discussed the annual curriculum plan, which included reviewing the curricular review cycle, the comprehensive literacy plan for the year, and the changes that had occurred in the course overview documents. The establishment of the Health Committee will happen after school begins and this team will work throughout the school year. During this discussion, we also spent some time on particularly the U.S. history curriculum, and at this time it will continue as it has been with some revisions during the year. And this year, the entire junior year class will be taught U.S. history. The committee also discussed the primary resources for the AP U.S. history and AP human geography and the orchestra for fifth and sixth grades. And then we established a meeting calendar. Our next meeting will be October 13th at 8:00 a.m.
Great, thank you for the committee's work, appreciate it. All right, on future agenda items then, our board meeting calendar, in board docs, we included the link to the school board meeting dates, and we had a little preview of it earlier today. On September 14th, 2020, we will hold a regular board meeting right here at the West Bend High School Silver Lining Arts Center, and on September 28th, that'll be our annual meeting, which also will take place right here at the West Bend High School's Silver Lining Arts Center. For items for follow-up and communication, I do not have any unless our superintendent has other items?
No, we'll just continue to monitor the evolving situation as we return to school and keep our public as well as our board informed.
All right, thank you. We reached the end of our planned agenda, is there any other business to come before this board? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion and second to adjourn, any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to everyone in attendance, we appreciate it.